All right, it is four thirty one, November twenty fifth. I'll call this meeting of the best board select with an order and first order business.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from November tenth. Any added additions, solutions? Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Nicole, second by Jim, do approve minutes from November tenth, all those in favor?
Sorry, 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 sorry. Just caught it. Last page, page six of six, top of the page. It says, we'll double check on the wording and the what concern of liability with the town be addressed with the call of the town's attorney and Primex. We're gonna call Primex as well.
Nicole, do you wish to amend your motion to approve the amended minutes?
I do.
Jim?
I'll second that.
Still second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perol of the manifest, payroll thirty seven thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars and ninety eight cents. Payroll liability is eleven thousand two hundred twenty six dollars fifty two cents. Accounts payable fifty seven thousand five hundred forty six dollars and forty three cents. The after retirement system is thirty thousand twenty three dollars and thirty one cents. With a hundred thousand to the elementary school for a total of two hundred thirty six thousand six hundred seventy one dollars and twenty four cents. A motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other comment? See, huh? Uh, discussion items in new business, DPW director, twenty twenty six road improvements. Looks like we have a list in front of us.
Yeah, I just did this map and just the colors on it. I only have one, I'm sorry. But just they match up to the, um.
Color on the sheet.
Yeah, colors on the sheet, so the purple would be the ones that, uh.
Inch and a half overlay.
Yeah.
And some of the.
Yeah.
Color coded it?
Um, I could do a better job, but this is what proposed.
So you have that sheet there.
And I can tell you that, I'm sorry, um, the crack filling, well, do you wanna go over each road or how, what do you wanna?
Um, I think we've all had a chance to review it. Is there anything in here specific? Oh, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear about the crack filling, but.
Yeah.
Then I don't think we need to go over it line by line unless somebody else feels differently.
Um, so this, so we're looking at the part of East Madison Road and Pound Road that were done last year. We're just doing the top coat part?
So, no, it was two years ago, so, and I guess that's what I, I can get into it all, but, you know, the crack sealing and what I've been taking in over the last few, oh, last twenty years or whatever, but we're, and, uh, we've been kind of maintaining worst dispersed attitude on our roads and, you know, that's not the way to go. We're, and we've skipped all the preservation parts of it, which is the crack filling, the chip sealing, uh, you know, any, any preservation, so our roads aren't being kept up to what they should be and we ended up fixing, you know, putting our money into garbage road, uh, roads that are deteriorated beyond, um.
Maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance and, and we just keep going in that cycle and we, if we don't get to, you know, some preserve, do some preservation on these roads. That's why we haven't done chip sealing in five years, five or six years, I think. And I think we've done crack sealing that I know of once in the last twenty years. That was on East Madison Road. Uh, so, and it's, it's hard to get, uh, figure it all into, into a budget to fit into our, and keep up with this maintenance. But some of the things we're doing, which is, I don't wanna say wrong, but it's pretty disappointing when we put a hundred thousand dollars into a road. Um, and it's, for lack of a better term, it's putting lipstick on a pig and, you know, it's just making it black.
Yep.
And it's, it's gonna not last long, but, so I don't know what you guys know about chip sealing or crack sealing, um, and what the town knows. But I would encourage you to, I mean, there's a million YouTube videos of it and, and what it does, but it makes the, it'll add five to seven years of life to a road. For the crack sealing, if you drive up, uh, High Street, you know, we chip sealed that, I think, well, it's probably been five or six years ago and, and we haven't done any crack sealing on it. You can see the water coming out of the cracks of the road, uh, right now, you know, in the morning. The dew, so.
So how does this jive with the road CIP? Cause we, you had some red roads. Is this completely separate warrant articles from the projects?
Yep, yeah, yeah. That road CIP, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna say I'm abandoning it, but that, that's completely talking about repaving roads. That's, that's the worst of first, uh, what I was talking about. That's, those were the worst roads. And we're never gonna, we're never gonna get caught up if we keep going by that. It's just.
Because looking, so, you know, East Madison Road, a particular address, um, so we're looking at, you know, the chip sealing that you're doing from, from Madison Corner up to Pound and then up Pound a little bit. And I think it was on the CIP, East Madison Road was one of the reds, um, for, you know, other parts of it, cause from Pound Road on down, um, it's, there's, you know, edges of the road are kind of crumbling and stuff like that. Um, and around Durgan Pond, it gets pretty, pretty sketchy. Um, so is that, I mean, we're, we're still gonna address that or how, how are you gonna?
I think that the issue is, um, I don't know, you go drive out into Morris Pond, drive out into, um, Carved and Bark, um, I mean, parts of Allard Hill, um, they're, they're, they're in the same condition, you know, you know what I'm saying? And it's, so without having unlimited funds, which we don't have, and that's what we're going for is, you know, worst of first. But you, if we try to get all the worst roads at the same year, it's just unaffordable. And you're still putting back the, the maintenance and preservation.
So this, if, this stuff in purple is maintenance, our maintenance items on roads that we do?
Yeah, crack sealing and chip sealing are, are, are maintenance.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Um, uh, so just from historic standpoint, when did we stop maintaining our roads?
They're doing the maintenance of the paving?
Not, not paving, just maintaining the asphalt once it's in, making sure the crack fill's done, the shouldering's done, all that stuff.
Uh, like I said, we've done.
Or we never maintained our asphalt.
Well, we've done chip, chip sealing in the past.
And I do see evidence of crack fill on East Madison Road one time.
Yeah, one time.
Yeah.
And that was probably, well, it was, I think it was the year after we paved it.
Okay. So I didn't know, like, as a practice, when we stopped doing it, why we stopped it? And it does definitely.
I don't think we ever started it.
Somebody called to have it crack filled at one point and I didn't know, like.
That was, I was, I was selecting that year that it came up and I actually think I brought that up, like I see other towns doing that all over the place and I'm like, how come we don't do that?
Right.
And they said, okay, we'll do that this one year and got a price on it and we did it and then it never got done again.
Right. Well, cause, um, and, and shouldering should be as part of it, cause it's the weakest point is where it's not supported on the edge. And adding gravel and compacting it is important.
Well, shouldering and, and I.
Cause there are parts of my road, obviously, when you're in Troy, like it just drops off.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something that we, uh, well, since I've been here, that we'll do every year as far as, um, we rent the shoulder machine to go out and, and do the shouldering and we don't, obviously you can't do every, uh, road in town and gravel's not cheap, but, um, but that is part of it and that, and I include that in the warrant article, so, you know, hopefully the way I've been doing it is, you know, on the, on the bids, when the, you know, hopefully it comes in a little lower than what you estimate and it generally does a little bit. And that leaves enough money to buy gravel and the shoulder machine and, and things like that.
So you're gonna put all these out to bid and then we'll do a warrant article based on the bid?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And that was another thing I, I'd like to see differently and we always just did, uh, road paving. And, and of course, the question that always gets answered, which roads? Um, and, uh, I would like to see the paving and the chip sealing and the crack sealing be separate warrant articles, personally.
Let's more transparent that way. It makes, it makes more sense. You can wrap your head around, instead of one sum for paving, it can be paving and maintenance and the chip seal, the crack seal. Does that make sense? Now, my, the pavement warrant article doesn't get added, added to a fund, it's just a non-lapsing.
Correct.
So, I mean, yeah, right.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good. I, I'm good with the three separate warrant articles. I think people need to see what we're trying to do. It makes a lot of sense.
My concern is that they're gonna, they're not three on this page, but this plus the paving is like a million dollars.
Well, no, this, this is on your.
Cause you're gonna have paving, aren't you gonna have paving too?
The paving's on the top.
That's on there. That's, the paving's on there.
There's two roads for inch and a half overlay paving.
Oh, okay, yeah. I didn't know if there was a whole separate paving thing to come through.
And, uh, you know, that's another thing with the, the maintenance, like you said, the, those four sections of East Madison Road, um, and again, that's, I don't know what other term to use, but what, and I, certainly I don't mind and I don't think it's a waste of money. We, we gotta do these temporary fixes, for instance, in front of your house and there's other spots that we have to do temporary fixes. And I, I don't mind doing that, but I think it's a, a waste of money to do, you know, there's, there's a balance there, like I'd like to fix, like, maybe, you know, a hundred feet, like in, in front of your house. But that's not just to fix it, you're not fixing it, you're just, you know, dressing it up, making it black and it's gonna last about a year. Unless, you know, that particular section of road, that really needs to be grounded, that needs to be a complete reclamation in that, that's, that stretch. You know, the, the drainage needs to be fixed, the, the rocks and the boulders, whatever's underneath the ground there needs to be removed and there needs to be some new gravel taken. And that's a whole nother project.
So what's the plan for that?
What, the plan for, um.
East Madison Road, I mean, it's one of our busier streets.
Yeah.
I think it's the busiest, most heavily used by trucks, especially ones that aren't supposed to be on it.
Yeah.
True trucks.
Um, uh, the, well, the, the thing about East Madison Road, the sections of it, I mean, we've done sections of it and done the underlayment of it over the last thirty years, there's, you know, there's parts of it that are, are good, you know, that you can just do a shim and overlay on. And then there's parts of it, for instance, like the part from your house, uh.
Pound to Leadmine.
Pound to Leadmine needs to be ground, that entire stretch needs to be ground. But you're talking, that project alone is gonna be, I would guess, you know, estimate, I have the, the footage and I've done the measurements, but would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm, I'm guessing about that. That, by the time you get that all done. So there goes your, your road budget for the year, you know, and that, then we're gonna forget about, um, all this other stuff and then where's, where's your maintenance coming to play at that point?
Well, looking at, you know, Peak Vista Road is on the list, um, you know, how critical is Peak Vista versus East Madison?
Well, it depends on whether you live on it or not, I guess.
That's more on Colby, is it?
Yeah, it's more on Colby.
Yeah, it's, it's up off of Colby.
Is that in worse shape than East Madison or?
And that's gonna come to the point of, um, that it's not gonna be a double chip seal, that's gonna be a complete reclamation. That's why.
That's the, the whole idea of worst dispersed, we're not getting ahead if we mix it. We're not getting anywhere, not gaining ground. We're gaining ground on one road. Cause yeah, the hard part is that, again, if I'm out of terms, let me know, but if you punt on the maintenance year after year, that, you know, whereas in here, Peak Vista, twenty six thousand dollar for a double chip seal turns into a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for complete reclamation.
For a complete reclamation.
Because if you don't chip seal and crack seal wherever you need to crack seal, that's when the roads, except on High Street, the water come out as soon as it gets steadily below freezing, those, that opens up, it eliminates, now you have, kinda like what's in front of your house.
Exactly, no. And, and how many times can we shim and, I mean, East Madison's got five inches on it.
Yeah. So, no, uh, with, with the places that it's been, um, you know, rebuilt and paved over the year, that's, that's the thing. I mean, you look at, uh, when we redid Allard Hill Road, that was like ten, I don't know, ten years ago or something like that. There was places where the pavement was over a foot thick, you know, and doing that, you're, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars putting shim and overlays on roads that really need to be rebuilt, you know, that, they're supposed to be, you know, I, it's forty six inches. You, I mean, you know that, you know, from the top of the pavement to the bottom of the road bed, but, you know, you might have three inches of, you know, base and then an inch and a half or two inches of shim on the top, but underneath that, you're gonna have three quarter gravel and then you're gonna have inch and a half gravel. And if all you have is boulders under that, on that base, those boulders, because of the freezing thaw we have and the, the poor drainage in certain spots, I mean, they work their way up through the, I mean, go over on, uh, um, East Shore Drive, I mean, there's, there's rocks, boulders coming out of the ground. I mean, they, they, every year they come further and further up.
Right.
I mean, till you remove those boulders, they're, they're not gonna stop. Whether you put a layer of pavement over the top of them or not, they're still gonna come up through the ground, so.
So what's our plan then for the red roads? Cause we also had for twenty twenty six, we're looking at East Shore, Morse Pond, Pheasant Road, East Madison.
Yeah.
So that is, and I'm just, hold on a second, Josh. I had Linda run numbers for what it would look like to a bond, for a bond. And after speaking with Josh, roughly estimate about a million and a half to do that whole west end of town. And those numbers on the bond are, they decrease over the years, but roughly a hundred and ninety six thousand and then it decreases every four, four thousand every year for the payment on that bond. If we can swing it in the next, either this year or next year, I think it is in our best interest to bond that west end of town to try to get ahead of this.
When you say west end, you mean the Morse Pond?
That whole red area on that map right there.
Like crossroads.
Oh.
Road pond.
Yeah, that I.
East Shore Drive.
Off of Lordy Mine.
Carved and Bark.
Off of Lordy Mine.
Everything on Ford Row.
My notebook was on it, sorry to see.
Scale, the years one through ten.
So we've reached that at one point five million?
Yep, and then the payment I think is, yeah, this is the payment over the years.
That's a rough estimate.
Right.
But, and, um, but I did price out, just, just East Shore Drive alone was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
That was just for shim and overlay, not including, uh, you know, there's, there's some spots where the drainage needs to be worked on and, and rocks and stumps coming out of the, the grounds, so.
And East Shore, um, is also, I would say, one of the busier roads in the summer anyway. Part of it is.
And it's, I mean, it, I think at some point we need to try to get ahead of it. That's the thought. We can't keep.
Or caught up.
Oh, yeah, caught, get caught up at least.
Right, that's what, you know, I'm just trying to figure what our plan is to do that.
Um, and, you know, my, that's my, my only thought is we're gonna have to, if to get caught up, we're gonna have to get bonded. Um, but jumping around all over the place is, is, is not working, um, in the long term, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I, I just said, it, so, I mean, again, this is just, I'm gonna ask you a question and answer to best your ability, I suppose, but, so if we say this year we do, we do this. We do what's on, but proposed and then say next year we bond to do all the stuff that needs to be done and get caught up. Then with the bond payment and a, and an approximate chip seal, crack seal, maintenance budget, would we be somewhere around the, between four and five hundred thousand like we budget for now?
Looking into the future, it's, it's really.
With the numbers that we have today would be, right, cause obviously numbers change, costs go a lot, but.
I mean, at some point you don't have to rebuild, I mean, we have, what, fifty miles or whatever, uh, uh, dirt, so about thirty miles of paved roads. So sixty lane miles, whatever. At some point you don't have to rebuild these roads. I mean, they don't, once they're built to a certain standard, you know, for the first time, yeah, you, it's still gonna have to do maintenance, but I mean, some of these roads that are lightly traveled, for, for instance, Deer Drive, I mean, that, that is, that is road is totaled. And I know a lot of, I, you'd be surprised how much traffic is on Deer Drive, actually. You know, that, that can, once that is rebuilt, that should stay good forever as long as you keep up a chip seal or a, a block seal or some sort of preventative maintenance on that.
So either way, we have, sorry.
No, I, I just, to answer your question, Troy, I think, and I was looking around, trying to figure out, like, you know, we wanna come up with a plan and I wanna come up with a plan, but, you know, not everybody's gonna agree with my plan, I understand that, whatever. And I was looking at this and I do, I heard through the great mind that we've recently gone back with North Country Council or something like that. So this is something that was through, this is the town of Auburn and, um, uh, they're, they work with obviously the Southern Country Council, whatever they call it there. And they, and I'm sure there's a cer- cost to it and, uh, void the cost, but they go out and do, um, ride the roads and they do a, a survey of your roads and they tell you what exactly your, your pavement condition is and, you know, if the taxpayers wanna pay for that, I, I, I think it's, it's a great idea, you know, but, um, that obviously takes time to, to do that and they put it all together and then they come up with a thing that's called a, a PCI. And you can, you can get these done through, you know, you got a contract with an engineering firm and whatever, they're not cheap and I know a lot, some towns have done that. One locally is Wolfboro, they did one a few years ago, where they go out and check the condition of the road, just like that. And it may involve some boring, cause you're gonna figure out what's underneath the, the road and whatnot. Um, and then they come up with a PCI on every road you have, which is a pavement condition index. And then depending on what percentage your PCI is on that particular road, they tell you what needs to be done with preservation or crack sealing and, you know, they'll tell you exactly what needs to be done. Personally, I'm not in favor of that, to spend money on something like that, but if, I mean, I can look into it, contact North Country Council or, or.
I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but I can't hurt to know what it would cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, so their final products, they have two towns' final products on their website, sort of like that, but, so their process is to do a windshield survey.
That's just it, that particular one, you know.
That's step one. They'll do an inventory, so they'll, um, inventory and assess pavement condition of all town maintained roads in your community, drive-through windshield, obviously. Um, analysis, the inventory will be entered into a statewide RSMS software, which will generate potential repair strategies and prioritization. Mapping, they'll map the road conditions and then, um, they'll hold a closeout meeting. It, I would think that this is something that we can do ourselves, because I feel like half the work is already done. And windshield survey, I would think is something that the DPW could.
Well, windshield survey is, is, you know, it's like, yeah, there's, uh, you know, alligator cracking here, there's, you know.
Yeah, it's not in depth.
But.
And I feel like analysis is kind of what you've already got started here. So I feel like you're halfway to this anyway. It's just a matter of kind of bringing it over the finish line.
Right. But again, that tells you what's wrong with your road. I mean, that's it, we know what's wrong with the roads, you know, it's just where to prioritize, um, which road that you wanna spend money on first.
I mean, if you wanna have a, you know, separate meeting with the select board to kind of go through this in more detail and talk about, okay, East Madison, because it's busier. Okay, you know what I mean, and Peak Vista, well, it's prioritized for this piece of it, because yes, it may be a small road, it's not heavily accessed, however, it's important, you know what I mean, like if we wanna sit down and go through that in detail, I'm willing to do that to help prioritize.
For me, I don't think that we should be prioritizing roads that way. I think we need to fix them all, we have to fix them all.
And I think that's, that's exactly what we've been doing for a long time, is doing the worst first. And it took me a while to get, not do that practice and realize that it's, it's not, that's not the way to go about it, you know, and, and.
Right, I mean, there are multiple factors.
Yeah.
It would be, I don't think there should be any factors. It would be nice to get to a point where they're all good.
Maintenance.
And then you have a list yearly, this, using the roads this year, and it's a rotation, it's not a this one's more traffic, this one's less, it's just a list of which ones we're maintaining what year and roll it forward.
Well, there's certain roads that are gonna get more worn and tear than others.
Yeah, they just deteriorate faster.
Well, right.
But the.
But that's part of the maintenance schedule.
But, yeah, and then that's, um, you know, like, like Deer Drive. We, if, when we do that, that's done, we won't have to touch that again, ever, in my lifetime, you know what I'm saying, in our lifetimes.
I would say that I kinda felt that way when we coughed up the money for East Madison Road, but here we are again and it's still my lifetime. And, you know, I mean, and I, I run that road and I'm like, why isn't it, I don't understand what's going on here, just falling apart.
The concern I have with a bond looking at this is that, obviously, it's, we pay three point four, four percent interest on one point five million and the calendar year payment over the years is two hundred thirteen, one hundred ninety six, one ninety one. And it's less than we would put into a road maintenance warrant article anyway. And we'd end up paying three hundred thousand dollars in interest on that one point five million.
Correct, but if we want to get to the point where ac- our roads are actually fixed, we need to budget.
So they're gonna be fifty thousand dollars a year?
Eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Or we bond it. Those, those are kind of the options. It's either that or we keep kicking the can and we keep driving on shitty roads and.
Well, it's not like you can fix them all at once anyway, otherwise we'd all be sitting home for.
Oh, no.
The problem, the problem is the can has been kicked, they shouldn't have been maintained in, in an orderly fashion from day one and they weren't. And, and nobody's gonna point fingers, cause it's been going on for fifty years.
Forever, yeah.
But if we can bond it now, short of, again, appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars every year, if we can bond it now and in our warrant article every year, we only need to appropriate two hundred and fifty or two seventy five to keep up with the maintenance. And then the bond payment on top of that, we're still within that five hundred thousand yearly that we would normally be in, yet we're getting somewhere.
There's no, and there's no, the answer to that, and talking to all the towns and, you know, UNH, I talked to UNHT two and, and all the, there's no magic bullet for any of that, you know, going either way. Some towns do that big bond and some towns just raise the budget up to, uh, you know, to cover, so they don't, not paying the interest, it's just.
Kinda, I understand not wanting to pay interest, but I also understand that an eight hundred thousand dollar hit every year for the next ten years is not something that people wanna see. Quickly.
Can I say something?
Quickly.
Uh, I've been in Madison for a few decades and at one point. At um, I've been in Madison for a few decades, and at one point in time. I believe uh in uh an engineering study was recommended for East Madison Road. And I think the town chose not to go in that direction, and hence, this costly annual. Is there an engineering study that should be done on that road?
Well, that's, that's just one road, we're talking about the whole west end, the town market moment, you're just talking about one road, we're talking about a dozen.
No, but East Madison Road is the big headache in town, has been since I've been here.
Um.
Um, and I don't know, maybe it's food for thought.
Thank you, Dawn.
If I might, um, so I remember that, we actually approached, uh, I I think it was H E B, just to give us a cost, and Sean. Um was here, I was here, and um we approached my, just here, engineering study would cost, just to get a cost on an engineering study, and it was four hundred thousand dollars, what we were quoted. To do just the engineering study. And and at the time, and I don't know if it's changed now, but usually, uh, four hundred thousand, Michael could remember, might remember as well, but. Um it was approximately what the engineering study cost, was approximately ten percent of the cost of the the project at hand, you know.
Yeah.
Came about, so it was four hundred thousand for the engineering study, so it would've been four million dollars to do what they. And I I wasn't interested at that time, putting four million dollars into East Madison.
Right.
I I would, uh, my my opinion is that it's been stated that we did dump a lot of money into East Madison Road, and then, as Josh pointed out, it has not been maintained, it was not crack filled, it was not shouldered. It was not, and now, we're here we are, we're at a, we threw money away because we didn't maintain our own road.
Right.
That's where we are right now.
We need to fix it and then maintain it.
Yes.
And I'm not saying bond is the answer in twenty twenty six, we, none of us have seen the entire, the budget in its entirety. Maybe it's twenty twenty seven that we do it, and I don't know where that puts us, but personally, I think it's probably our best option.
I think obviously, to accompany that would be, okay, so what are we gonna fix in what year?
Well, and I think with the the bond, the purpose of the bond is that west end of town. All of those red roads that are highlighted. Were estimated to be within that bond, if I'm not looking at the map, so they might be one of those. Does that include Allard Hill?
No, have we ever even spoken about that?
Allard Hill, yeah.
I I would think Allard would be, um, Allard, and I know, oh, and that's the thing that I had a, I had my hard time wrapping my head around, but like. The Meadows, you know, we maintain that, that is trash.
Can I ask why? Is the entrance not in Chacorla?
Nope, the other one.
No, not the Meadows.
The other, oh, I'm like.
I was like, where is that?
No, it's off.
You said Banfield Hollows.
Yeah, no, it's off of Allard Hill.
Banfield Hollow, right?
Nope, nope.
No, not Banfield, Meadows is the condominium development off of Allard Hill.
Okay, I'm thinking Chacorla Meadows, I'm like, that's.
Yeah, that's been in there a while.
Okay, now I know what you're talking about, okay.
And that's, that is.
Have we done nothing to that up there?
Nothing.
It's, is Skyline ours, or is Skyline private?
That's, no. Skyline's private, Skyline's private, um, the Meadows and um, there's another condominium.
Office Bigot, okay.
Right, Ridge View.
Yep.
That's ours.
I said, you said Meadows before, and I'm like, I'll be goddamned if I maintain a Chacorla Meadows.
That's gonna be like forty five years in there, probably.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty years, maybe, yeah.
You know, the good things about those, I say good things, but they're not good things, um, the good things about those developments is, once, you know, they'll la- you know, you don't have to do anything to them for forty years.
Right.
You know, but after forty years, there's something that needs to be done.
Yeah. And I know it's tough to project the numbers, but I'm hopeful that if we move the direction of the bond, like I said. You're talking about a hundred and ninety, two hundred thousand dollars a year of the bond, and three hundred or whatever in the warrant article, which is still within that. Normal, what we would spend.
And that's not gonna.
But that's not gonna fix them all either, it's.
No.
Just out of curiosity, what year is this map? Is this current?
Oh, it's an old map, and then Peak Vista wasn't even on there.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was free, so.
Hold the budget, buddy.
You've been taking lessons from John. So you've been taking lessons from John, yeah.
Somebody threw it away at the transfer stations.
I I'm okay with this, and I I I think I'd like to see three articles. The only downside to that is people wanting to kick the can on certain things.
Yeah. I live on East Madison Road, so, and as you know, it's, you know, it is the most heavily traveled road. Municipal road in town, and. I like rough roads personally, keeps people going slowly.
That's not, I do too. The noise, the noise is the only issue I have with it, is those empty trailers going by, slanting like they're slamming through your front window.
I know I'm in the minority on that.
I didn't like it the last, when we paved, I I voted against paving my own road last time, and they, they out came the the race cars, and it was insane, and at the time, my corner had fifteen kids. And it was, it was nuts, we had the signs, and then the signs kept getting stolen, and then they'd end up in car accidents.
I feel like people use Durgan Pond as like a roller coaster ride, they go whipping around those corners and those rough roads.
All right. Anything else you wanted to hit us with?
Um, I can ex- uh, no, I I think that's great, I think, uh, um, at some point, I I, you know, separately, I can. I don't wanna take up everybody's time, but you know, it it, and I did go over it with you and Jake about the. The budgeting and how they go through all that, and more of the finite details of it, but it's it's the planning part of it, and of going forward, and how what the town wants to do and.
Hell. Is there, I mean, obviously, that's probably a stupid question, but is there something that was at the top of your list that you pulled off of this plan to keep us under that five hundred thousand?
Well, that that's the thing, no, I didn't, um. But yeah, yes and no, like I said, it's it's hard to decide.
It's all. Yeah.
You know, what I would love to do, that stretch from Nicole's house to Durgan Corner, to through Durgan up to Marsh McEnnis.
Yeah.
That needs a rebuild, in in a bad way, and and um. Do I want, do, you know, would I like to throw, you know, like I said, throwing a dart at a dartboard, would I love to throw thirty thousand dollars at it next year to to. To uh spiff it up a little bit, to make it, but that's only gonna, yeah, I would love to do that, that's only gonna last.
Till Frost comes.
Till Frost comes, for one summer, and it it's it's gonna go back to that, unless you do some major, you know, the more. Major renovation to it, you know, it really needs to be grounded, that that's a complete reclamation job, that that section. But once you get to Durgan Pond, where we ended, you know, going up the hill, it's not as bad, you know, that could be a shim and overlay. Um going down, most of the way down could be a shim and overlay, because we did rebuild that, you know, uh, twenty years ago, or twenty five years ago, that has been rebuilt, there's been. That that, East Madison Road has been rebuilt in sections.
Yeah.
Over the last.
In my lifetime.
Yeah, in in a lifetime, in sections, but we didn't keep up with the, like you said, we didn't keep up with the maintenance, we didn't keep up the crack sealing, we didn't do any chip sealing, um.
Since I love that. Yeah. The holes in East Madison Road, so they cannot be filled with crack seal, it is, they're, this way.
No. Oh, it's beyond, I looked into it, I looked into doing some, you know, continuing with the crack seal, and you know, guys that do that for a living came out and said, no. That it's too far gone, it's too far gone for a crack seal, it's too far gone for a chip seal, that needs a shim and an overlay. And and keep in mind, there's other roads that we've maintained, you know, we've we've worked on in the last, I would say, ten years that. Because we didn't keep up on the chip sealing and the crack sealing and the ma- some of the maintenance, Fox Road, the first part of Fox Road is. You know, we did that, I think, six or seven years ago, and. You know, the first part needs to have a a an overlay, put on at least an overlay, inch overlay, and then you can do a chip seal over that. But it's too bad that we spent that mon- I I think it's too bad that we spent that, I I really do, now knowing what I know now, that. We didn't keep up with the maintenance, and it's gonna cost us money in the end.
All right. So we'll look at putting this on as three separate articles, I think. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, guys.
Please stay, hang out with us. Thank you. If everyone leaves. I don't know, every time we get done some, talking about something, everybody gets up and leaves.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just messing.
Who's next?
Jim. No, I don't know where you are. Oh, you're at the gym. Are you in a hurry?
No, I'm just gonna wait, go talk fast. I know.
All right. Police twenty twenty six budget. Jim? All right, it looks like. The, we've already gotten an explanation on the majority of the increases, is. Central square increase, which was the new system that the Sheriff's Department is going to.
Right, and that will be undoubtedly recouped back into that bill, or credited to that bill next year, so it's kind of.
Yeah. Um, some new computer for the office.
Yeah, the new computer and server, I, it's, we're all, more often than, more often than not, we're all in there working, and I I don't have enough stations for everyone to work. Our server, uh, Patrick recommended that we uh should have upgraded that a couple of years ago. Um, I think it's prudent to do it now, that we're to the point where it needs to be replaced, but also with this new upgrade with the county, uh, that's anticipated, I. And then the antivirus, uh, I think you recommended that to the town hall upstairs too, um, so that's built into that as well.
Three percent raises for.
Sergeant Martin and Officer Lohman.
And then a little bit of an increase to the vehicle maintenance line for that fourth car.
Right, and the the fourth, yeah, for the fourth car, but also too, I, the amount of repairs we had to do that were unanticipated, uh, on the Charger. And then, um, both Tahoe's actually, um, I think the biggest repair we did this year was on. Uh, the twenty twenty two Tahoe needed, obviously, their wiring harness for the um, the fans, uh. Killed one of the fans, and it was several thousand dollars to make that repair.
So overall, three point seven nine percent increase, which equates to fourteen thousand and one hundred fifteen dollars?
One big change I did was, uh, I reduced the part-time overtime budget line by half, from sixteen down to eight. I obviously, I didn't use a lot of it, I was hoping that the part-timers were gonna uh work more of those part-time shifts, um, it's. Nobody wants to work part-time, I had a couple applicants come through, um, decided against hiring those applicants, just didn't want a good fit, um. We're doing okay with taking call, which is a another small issue I have, um, but, yeah. I don't see the need for it to be sixteen, but I also want it to be. Oh, I just don't know how to gauge it, I I think eight thousand's appropriate, and if we don't, if I don't get to eight thousand next year, then maybe I reduce it a couple thousand dollars more. You know, now that we'll have fourth full timer, uh, I don't see the need for it to be that high, so.
Which almost effectively cuts out the raises as far as budget-wise goes, so it's a good offset with that fourth full time. Any questions on the board?
Nope.
I think it's a, it's pretty thorough, pretty explanatory.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Josh, I wasn't serious, you think.
Oh, okay.
It's like, I don't think I'm serious, I just like your company.
But stay anyway.
May I be dismissed?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for staying, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted you here for moral support.
I know, he left on my glass.
All right, Madison Rec Vacation Camp. You want me to explain, or you wanna?
Sure, I love it.
So we're looking to run a camp, or Heather's looking to organize a camp for Christmas vacations, April vacation, February vacation, for those parents that need help during those times. Uh, at our last rec meeting, we decided to do one for Christmas, and then after discussing it with Heather and Linda, we decided that. Timeframe-wise, trying to get in the public hearing and not knowing what the enrollment's gonna be and all those things, that charging a fee for the Christmas one just didn't make sense. But we can use this as a gauge to kind of see where we're gonna be at in February to April, and then potentially institute a fee per day at that point.
I would definitely tell people that the next one may cost, because you'll probably get a bunch of free ones on Christmas, and when they have to pay, they may cut that.
Yeah.
Right.
So as, right now, we have a suggested donation, um, and I I put fifteen as a suggested donation, um, and I did have a parent reach out, asking if it was like kind of mandatory. I said no, but um it would go towards, you know, obviously, helping with the counselors, um, helping with supplies, um, different things we might need for those extra days.
Do you know what that added to your budget? If you did that?
See, yeah, so I haven't added that part of the counselors to that budget yet, we are gonna update it, um, we want to update it for February and April.
Okay. Okay.
Um, but again, this would just help us that a little bit, we're hoping. I wish everything could be free, but it just.
It can't, see.
It just can't.
The donation, the revolving rec donation, or something that goes with the donation to the general fund? No such thing.
I mean, I thi- I don't think we can put it in the general fund, because it's not a fee.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, it's okay, I was.
Yeah, this this, this donation would just go into our rec revolving fund, but going forward, the fee would be something that would offset taxes.
Yeah.
Go back into the general.
Yes, right, yeah.
But I think the thought process was, you know, we let them know that it's not going to be free going forward, and that we really didn't want it to be free this time, but it's just kind of how it worked out.
That's how we're staffing them.
Yep, so it'd be the same summer camp counselors, I have four interested in working, um, I told them that if our numbers aren't good though, and we don't have enough children, then. We wouldn't have four, we would have two a day, um, each day, so they, um, I told them they may just have to split it up, and they could each have two days, and. Trying to make it work, because they're obviously off those weeks, so they were looking for the extra work as well, so it kind of helps them out, helps us out.
And the camp was Monday, Tuesday, one week, Monday, Tuesday, the second week, so it'd just be four days total.
Yep, yep. It'd be right before both holidays, um, Monday, December twenty second, Tuesday, December twenty third, and then Monday, December twenty ninth, Tuesday, December twenty thirtieth, sorry. Like a nine to four, so seven hours.
My question is, for you, Linda, from a payroll standpoint.
That's what I'm thinking.
We don't have budget money to pay them this year, just can we pay them next year's budget in January?
Those weeks will get paid in January anyway.
So it's not a, I just wanna make sure it's not an issue.
Cause the. The.
Yeah, we only look, yeah, it's like the, that's that Saturday.
Yeah. Well, we'll go over the bottom line on that rec one.
Yeah, okay, now you do that, then.
This, the week of Christmas, and that.
Be that close.
Yeah, I don't have it, it's ninety seven percent. Follows that on the.
Yeah, the the week of Christmas and the week of New Year's.
Go on to the next budget, yeah.
Will get paid out of January.
Yeah, okay.
It works out well, so it, yeah.
Yeah. Not that, it wouldn't be the bottom line of the entire town, so it's not an issue, but it would be bottom line of the rec portion.
On your rec, yeah. Yeah.
We're at ninety seven percent extended, and we're at ninety one percent, ninety point one percent of the year.
Yeah, okay.
There's no way to, it wouldn't be appropriate, I'm guessing, to pay them stipends out of the rec revolving, I'm guessing that's not the way we'd wanna operate.
Not as, because they're already employees, correct?
Right.
We're on the payroll, I know, I've, I, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. It didn't, it doesn't sound right, but. It didn't, it doesn't sound right, but.
I know, I I can't say we've come up against that before, but like you said, it doesn't.
So that week of Christmas though, it comes into the new budget season.
Right, it would come out of next year's budget.
And again, I would need to add those to our budget, but still.
But it's like four days at?
Yeah, it would be four days this time and then depending on February and April. February has a holiday in there too. Um, President's Day is that first Monday. April's usually the whole thing, but, yeah, it just depends on.
So you should plan a public hearing in January.
Yeah.
To set the fees.
Yep. And then, I mean, I was thinking twenty a day, um, but I would look for your recommendations too on that.
Can't get daycare for that.
No.
No, you can't.
That's really low, I think that's really low.
And then again, right, is that enough? I mean, I'm still trying to figure that out too. I mean, if we need it all for every day.
We'll get mine, cause mine has the U S meetings in it.
Up to five days.
Yeah, our meeting is on the sixth.
Yep. Maybe the sixth.
But four counselors usually equals, we we do ten per one is like our, you know, the ratio for that, so we'd have a, have to have at least forty kids to to have four counselors.
Right.
And the counselors are eighteen to twenty dollars an hour?
They're eighteen, yeah, and then, yeah, one that's twenty.
Twenty dollars is not gonna offset.
And that's what I was saying right away.
Twenty dollars is not gonna offset the cost of counselors even to staff it.
No, I mean, the going rate for daycare right now is what, thirty-seven?
Yeah, it was at forty, forty or more.
Yeah. For a really long day, like a seven to five daycare is fifty bucks, easy.
And this is eight to four thirty, just like camp?
This would be nine to four, which is just like camp.
Okay.
I know, it's tough.
I mean, I guess I'm at, I'm at thirty-five. You know, I know people don't wanna pay a ton of money, but you're still cheaper than every other daycare and we have to find a way to offset the costs of the counselors.
And again, if people aren't interested, they won't sign up, we won't have to even worry about this, but I feel like it's just an option, you know, for those parents that need something. It would be K through six too. It would be that K through six, like elementary age, yeah.
And it's in the school year, so we're not talking about kids entering K or exiting six, we're talking about the ones that are currently in it.
Yep.
From other towns too?
Uh, Madison residents. I mean, if it grows, it grows, that's great, but let's start there, I guess.
Yeah. I think thirty-five is the more reasonable fee in today's climate. I definitely don't think it's too much. No, I know there are gonna be parents that have a hard time, but we always ask them to reach out and we do our best to find.
Yes.
Scholarships.
Scholarships or other avenues for them. But I think for the parents, they can afford it in order to try to offset our counselors, we need to look at a thirty-five dollar fee.
I was at forty with a discount for a second child. That's how I felt, like in case they had two kids, it'd be like thirty for the second child.
So we wanna schedule a public hearing for January sixth?
With thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five dollars, everybody on board with thirty-five?
Two?
Yep.
For, so we call it for vacation day camp?
I don't know. I'm just trying to be. School vacation, yeah, school vacation.
School vacation, K maybe?
Yeah, school vacation, K.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, this could also be used for really any daily thing that we would do, correct?
Maybe if we changed the wording of the public, the, the, the name of the fee would have to be.
I'm just, I'm just asking, yeah.
I mean, if we called it daily camp fee. Camp fee. Cause then it could encompass. Oxy some daily camp fee?
Vacation camp.
Well, no, so we're gonna do it.
I don't think I wanna get into it for summer camp.
No.
It would be a little too hard to keep track of.
Well, then, yeah.
School year.
So I'm just throwing it out, yeah, we don't need it.
School vacation camps make sense, I mean, you're only gonna do it February and April.
Yeah. Right, it's Christmas, yeah, yeah.
Alright, we'll leave it as is then. Thank you Heather.
Thank you.
Right, Mad TV signage cameras at town hall, A C at office and franchise fees. Say you do.
Lots of stuff, you gonna start it?
Yeah, I can start.
You got a whole slope.
I know, it won't be as quick as Jim and Heather were.
So, um, thanks for meeting with us, um, thanks for Linda, she kinda squeaked us right into the, your agenda really last minute, um, but I didn't wanna delay much more because, um, I wanted to address our office. So if you don't know, we are over at the, um, town garage and, um, we've, I think we've been there forever, um, but there is like an air conditioner on the inside wall of the garage and that air conditioner has since died, so it needs to come out. So I was kinda coming before the selectmen here to see if, um, the D P W could maybe remove that air conditioner and then insulate that wall better so that we, it would be more airtight and we aren't getting fumes from the garage into our office. But it's kind of a two-step project because then we do need an air conditioner come spring, um, because of our equipment's, you know, temperature sensitive. So the second part of that project would be to put an air conditioner on the exterior wall. It, it doesn't look like we're moving anywhere right now, we had tried to find a new office location, but there's just no viable spot right now. So in the meantime, um, I'm just wondering, I guess, how I can get that project started, would the D P W do it?
I know, I shouldn't have made Josh stay.
I know, I almost was like. Yeah, so I guess that's one item we had, um. I had, I had talked to Dave Swift about it before and, you know, we had a little bit of back and forth about since there is like a dent on the side of that, on the front of that building now anyway, they could maybe, um, you know, blow out a new doorway or there is a window there, so maybe the air conditioner could go into that window, although that would need to be reframed because it's like a really extra-large.
Picture window?
Yeah, um, I don't even think it's like double-pane glass, I think it's, um, you know, it wouldn't hold an air conditioner basically. But I did wanna, you know, come before you guys, since you guys have purview over the D P W, to see if we could do this project. I had spoken to one of our board members about maybe now would be a good time to start because it's, there's no snow on the ground yet. Um, so I'm just kinda looking for some advice on when and how to start that and if it's possible. And if the D P W can't, then how can we move on?
I'm sure we can take it out and fix the hole. I think we have Josh or Dave take a look and then get back to us about fixing the hole that's in there right now and then we can move from there. Or taking the A C out, fixing that hole.
Yep. So there, where the A C sits, there's just a piece of plywood, so it's like, there's no insulation in it, so, um, not just buttoning up that hole, but hopefully like putting some insulation on that, on that piece of wall. It's not huge, but.
Yeah, just have them take a look and then get back to us with what they think it's gonna take to fix it.
I, it's not perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction to a little bit of a better office space.
That kinda ties into a later conversation about general government projects on the C I P, but you go ahead.
Speaking of the office, we did want to hang, and I think Linda put this in your packet, but we did wanna hang a sign outside of our office, um, so it'd kinda more or less look like that. Uh, but because it's not our building, it's, and your proof is a little bit differently, we kinda had them redesign it. We took the logo out, yeah, it's just kinda hard to read from the roadside of the logo, so, um, no logo, but who we are and how to contact us. And, but it's not our building, so we don't wanna just drill holes into the wall, so I guess maybe another question for D P W if that, if they don't mind if we hang it and, um.
I mean, I don't mind the sign.
No.
Is it for the door or is it freestanding, like on a post?
No, it would be, um, screwed into the wall beside the door, it would be on the doorway, but it would be next to it on the wall.
I don't have a problem.
Hope Hutchinson, Chair of the Mad TV Board, Ron Force, one of our members, as said, he has the equipment and the know-how and that he would install it, so we can take care of that.
I know, unless somebody's objecting, I've heard a lot of okay's, I'm just saying, just order the sign and have Ron hang it.
Okay, great, um, thank you.
It's only two hundred and fifty dollars?
What's that?
It's only two hundred and fifty dollars, the sign?
It's, it'll be less than that, cause that included an installation fee, um, which we're gonna just install it ourselves.
So two hundred and forty then?
Yes, um.
Is it tin, vinyl?
It's, uh, it's vinyl on the outside covering.
Metal?
Yeah, like a metal sign, I can't remember what it's called. But, yeah.
It's like vinyl over metal, yeah.
It's a, it's metal, probably metal on both sides and a composite on the inside, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and there is a term for that and I learned it and then forgot. And then our, our third, uh, little thing to come to you with is, um, a new camera setup here at the town hall. Our Mad TV board met last week and they approved, um, spending up to sixty-five hundred from our expendable trust fund to purchase a new camera setup in here, which would mean, um, we would have multiple cameras mounted to the wall, so that when we're filming, we would not be filming, you know, behind people, the backs of people, be able to kinda get all corners of the room. It also would mean a new mixer, which would also, um, do the live streaming as well, so it's kind of a, a unit that does multiple things. Doug is here tonight, cause he kinda spearheaded this project, so if you had questions about specifics or anything, um, we're all here to answer those, um, but because it is over five thousand. Oh, and I do have a new, a slightly updated quote from that.
I think they have that Asia, I gave one to, remember this?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Two eighteen eighty-one, sixty-two eighteen?
Right.
That's the new one we'll get.
Yes, that's the new one, yep. Okay.
How much is in that, I mean, not that it really matters, but how much is in that fund right now?
A little over sixty-six thousand. So we'll, we'll have a little over sixty thousand of half of this expense. Do you feel we can show better? I was just watching on YouTube until I came, you know, timing it to get here. And alls I was seeing was the backs of Josh and, you know, the sign, I couldn't see. With this, we could hold a map up or a sign up more easily to a camera and let those homes see it and just get better coverage.
Does it change anything audio-wise?
Well, it could actually, because the mixer will allow for six microphones, so we only have the, the three tabletops in public, so if we have six, the sound might be better, um, if that's what you were kinda getting to.
Yeah, so just, I do in my off times watch some of the show, and the audio quality is, it's there, but sometimes you can't hear people for whatever reason and I I can't tell you why, that's, that's.
Yeah, and it's tricky, cause like, you know, right now, the boiler's running, so you're gonna get a little bit of that on the microphones, um, so.
And rustling papers.
And rustling papers, you know, tapping fingernails on the table or clicking pads or.
Okay, good, yeah.
Guilty as charged.
Yeah, me, I'll say they're gonna do this thinking and.
We hear all of that, um.
Although watching from home, I could hear the, uh, uh, audio well, I didn't notice the boiler until it went off. It was somewhere, it wasn't something that went off in my house, it was, you know, I realized.
And I see on your minutes just saying that you guys can install them?
I was just gonna say.
By what you guys said, you have people that can install the cameras?
Well, we do have, um, some new, new hires that have, have a lot of experience in this field, um, and they offered to install them.
And again, Ron and Doug, um, you know, have experience and.
Yeah.
If I, if I, I did this for thirteen years at another town before I came here, and I built the whole system, like what we're doing here, off a bigger scale, so I think it's fairly easily done and I'll do the training of all our videographers who get that just done. We don't have to, we don't have to switch it on all at once, we'll, we'll install the stuff and we'll continue, we'll all be back here, so we know what's going on. And we'll slowly move it, move it in. A number of years ago, when all we had was the camera, you couldn't hear anything, so we put microphones in. That's the important part, that people can hear, right, being said, yeah, it's nice to see their face, but at least they can hear. So now we'll see their faces, see, look at his face.
Can't hide anymore by here?
No more, no more hiding, and, and our plan is to put one in that corner, one in that corner, and one behind us here, and that'll cover the whole.
And they tilt and zoom and pan.
And you'll be able to move those directions from your picture.
I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, so that, the new quote includes the joysticks, which would control the movement of the cubits.
And the only permanent fixtures would be the cameras, like a new mixer would just still sit on a table and.
Right.
It's semi-permanent, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to screw it into the wall, but that's not, cables run, what else you think?
And that, we're asking for the sixty-five hundred, just so if we have to buy some mounting hardware or something beyond the actual purchase from it's.
How does that work?
We have to spend money to get the money back, so it can't be, you can't like, you have to get reimbursed for an invoice we paid.
Yeah, because it's, it's an expendable, expendable trust fund, so we would have to approve this, and then if there's something else you need to spend, they, do they need our approval if it's under five thousand after that?
If you want not the expendable trust fund.
It does, yeah. If you have to spend more than that, you just have to submit another request for payment out of that trust fund, which is no big deal.
So if we spend more than sixty-five hundred or if we spend more than this quota amount?
If you spend more than you imposed, because it's an expendable trust fund, we have to spend what we were invoiced for.
Okay.
And then go from there, so if Asia had to go buy mounting screws and you had a receipt, we can reimburse Asia after we have that receiver invoiced yet.
Out of the E T F.
Out of that E T F.
I don't have a problem with it.
Move it.
So, somebody wanna make a motion with that dollar figure?
I'll make a motion to approve six thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents for Mad TV to purchase new equipment to come out of their expendable trust fund.
I'll second.
What's about Joey, second one Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'll just still come before you paperwork.
The paperwork, yeah.
Um, okay, thank you.
The other thing was about franchise.
Franchise.
Yeah, that's our last.
I don't know if Hope you wanna.
Well, you know, we came to you in January and you passed a, you approved a motion, made a motion that we request that our franchise fees go from three point five percent, this is what Spectrum charges all their customers and what we, and they, they give us. And it, it ends up being most of our budget each year. That was supposed to go into effect ninety days after we approved that motion. We don't know if it has, if that information ever went to Spectrum slash Charter, so that they know that motion was made and approved on that date. Is it in the hands of the attorney, is it you as a board's responsibility to let them know that was done? We know it's hard to communicate with them, we wanna know what things are.
I'm gonna look to the one who has all the answers for me, but I don't have that.
I, I reached out to Kate last Monday, um, and I haven't heard back from her, but she was at some conferences and things like that, so.
I know on the last update, if I remember right, she gave us, they were still hashing out wording and that word.
They were still, yeah.
They were still hashing it out.
hashing out with the contract in general and I don't remember if that was.
I think that was part of it, they were still, they weren't hashing that out either?
No, the the there are two issues here. One is the new contract, which they're hashing out.
Contract. Yep.
The fee upgrade was in the old contract.
Okay.
So that's still in effect because we haven't got a new one.
New one.
That was right there and it shouldn't be the issue.
Okay.
So we need to wait to hear back from Kate on whether or not. Charter did anything about the four and a half percent?
See where we're at with it.
See where we're at with it. So it is in, it is in the attorney's hands right now and when she gets back to us, we will know more. And hopefully know more on the contract, I don't remember.
I know, and I, that was part of the reason I called her was I kinda lost track of where we were in a while.
So hopefully we'll have an answer for you soon.
Cuz it's gonna matter, you know.
Yep.
Going to the town to ask for the difference between what we.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um, what we get for the twenty-twenty-five year to fund our twenty-twenty-six operation versus.
Yeah, and I think our hope is that if um that extra percent is taken out, we won't need to fund extra. We will be able to fund the franchise fees.
Of course, one problem is subscriber basis going down.
Right.
The fewer subscribers the lower the what we get, so we need to raise the fee, cover that, such gargoyles.
We won't get you an answer soon this weekend.
One other little thing, Doug confirmed that I'm right, that monitor on the wall is no longer being used.
Monitor, it's a it's a mixer.
I'm sorry, mixer.
Right.
And so we'd like to take it down.
Yes.
Get it off there. I don't know where the wires go, but while we're installing, we'll get rid of that.
There.
Could go up there, yeah.
They were cut off.
See what's hanging through there.
So we'll take care of that. Might be able to sell it back to P and H or somewhere else, I think.
Yeah, we might be able to sell some of this equipment when we upgrade, so that will go back into.
Thank you.
That's I think the wire equipment fund.
Since we have a couple, three of three of the folks here, um, just talking about, again, tying into the CIP and the general government building stuff. Part of it, I think it's not healthy, I think, for, you know, for you guys to be in the garage like that. Obviously, and then to have an air conditioner until recently piping into it. And, you know, just been trying to think about what town spaces because Chief had mentioned in, um, is it CIP meeting or was it a? Does CIP meeting mean?
Yeah.
That um they've outgrown their space and the 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 stuff that's getting like stored next to boilers or things like that, it's just not.
Oil tank.
Yeah, oil tank. Yeah, so, you know. Chief needs more space, you guys need a healthier space. And I think all of that needs to happen with our force up to four and you guys need to get out of the garage. It needs to happen sooner rather than later. So I think then it falls on us as the selectmen and then, you know, looking at the items on the general government thing and how do we reconfigure um buildings available to us to accommodate, you know, both of your needs? So Kate, we're standing here at one point and I looked at him like, wait a minute, what if like, you know, like police blew out and took more of this space? And MAD TV had a little office over there or we had more storage down here for, you know, um, the offices upstairs? You know, just kind of putting it around in my head as to as to what we could do. Cuz this is a lot of hallway. And we don't need that much hallway. Hallway or, you know, we don't need a foyer down here.
Yeah, there's a lobby. You don't need space up there.
That's true.
Yeah, so I guess if you guys could think about what, you know, what's the dream space and what's the realistic space of how much square footage would you need?
A green screen with a studio like.
Dream big, dream big.
Really film a lot of cool stuff?
But if you, if Chief, if you think about maybe kind of what square footage would really do the trick and then we give you that plus more in case you, you know, need to expand again. You know? Can you guys think about what?
Yeah.
What square footage you need and we try to look at how to make that happen.
I don't know if there was maybe some talk too of maybe some of the school opening up because they have such low student count now, but I don't, I don't know how that would work cuz it is a school and.
Right.
It's also community building now.
It'll be after our exit.
But yeah, I mean, if we're all kinda um playing Tetris over here, you know, it's great. You guys to think, keep us in your minds when you're rearranging or just, you know, if anything comes up. Cuz we are still looking, I I would like to get out of the garage for the garage's sake so that they can use the space. I think they could use it. And then obviously for us, um, just to have a better spot to be in.
Cuz it ties into the CIP, which of course ties into the master plan and it's all, you know, related. Do you guys think you could do that kind of, just kind of requirements? About how much space you want and need and what kind of space you need, like do you need multiple offices, you know, like do your. Does Jake also need his own office or, you know what I mean, like just think about what what you need and then.
Sure.
You guys too?
Yeah, they can certainly do that.
And stories don't read to our elders. Like if you have to put a equipment away, like what does that look like?
Okay, storage space.
You mean like storage, yeah.
All right.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Right, twenty-twenty-five audit agreement with Robertson.
This is our. New agreement for that audit of twenty-twenty-five. Whoops. Normally or traditionally, they give us a three-year agreement, but this year they only did a one-year agreement, so.
Did they know something we don't?
Yeah, I I don't know, I really didn't push it cuz it went up five hundred dollars. So it's, we're paying thirteen thousand five hundred, if this agreement is fourteen thousand.
Per year?
For twenty-twenty-five.
Right, so but previous years were thirteen thousand five per year, not thirteen thousand five hundred per three-year contract?
Right, yeah.
Just checking. Any significant changes in the documentation itself or that's?
No, it's, they'll do the same things they've been doing for us all along and.
Thank you.
They understand us, we understand them and it always goes so slowly cuz we've been working with them. They actually already sent me dates saying they wanna come X, Y, Z dates and I said, well, let me get this whole thing signed first. Have me come.
Well, one-year contract, they didn't hint at like going out of business or anything like that, did they?
No, I know, but they didn't say, tell me.
They're not gonna tell you that. I don't know, I don't think their employees might, eh, they heard something, but. All right.
Well, do we need a motion to sign?
We do, I don't know, it's a, it's a five hundred dollar increase, but I think that's within reason or grand scheme of everything that we pay for.
And next year, maybe we'll shop around just in case.
Yeah, solicit some other thing.
Be prepared. Start like in maybe September or something, put out some RFPs just in case we find out next December that, oh, by the way.
They don't like to tell you one?
It's good to have them anyway, what if somebody would do it for eleven?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I'll make a motion, will we sign it?
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Joy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
More money.
Did you get, you at the bottom of the list, too?
Are you coming back again? I'm on to the.
A grant agreement, okay, yeah.
Grant Agreement Amendment Notice, glad you're still here, Jim.
Yeah, so this is just the amendment for the speed, uh, portable speed sign.
Yep.
Uh, through the Hampshire Office of Highway Safety. They've already actually just got the email last week from uh the office down there that Attorney General and Department of Safety Commissioner has already signed off uh on our detail grant and then uh the in-car radar unit, so that's all good to go. And then this is just the additional piece that uh they're adding, so.
Dogging myself, ladies.
I don't see why it's not gonna.
Here we go here.
Improved, so. And yeah, so I'll I'll sign it, um, and as with the other uh equipment and detail grant, they just asked for one signature, so if it's the chairman, um, that's all they needed.
I'm not trying to see you, Jim, I just trying to get that a little.
Sorry, yeah.
So. So if I understand, they're increasing the amount of our grant by two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars.
Yep, so uh that that portable sign is, um, we have to pay the total cost upfront, but they reimburse three quarters of it back to us. Uh, so that increase you see on that amendment is just the increase uh for the total amount.
The sign.
Oh, the sign.
Yeah.
So what is the other eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars?
So that's like the.
Eight hundred sixty, eight thousand.
Yeah, the detail, sort of the patrol, detail patrols like DUI, speed details. And then another part of the other percentage of that is the in-car radar, um, cost of that radar unit.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one we signed.
Yep.
Yeah, a couple, a month ago or so.
Just wanna make sure, thank you.
Do you have any other motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to sign.
Hold on.
We gotta, you gotta make this motion. With amendment, we're granting acceptance with amendment. I thought she was gonna throw that out.
She should.
Yeah, you like this.
No, you're good, you already gave it to me, I just need to pay attention. I guess I'll do it.
There you go.
So just make a motion to accept the.
Say that that first number would be the eight thousand six hundred sixty-one fifty-six? So I will make a motion to accept the terms of the highway safety grant as presented in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
I think you do the eight thousand there.
I did it backwards, you're right.
Eighty-six sixty.
In the amount of eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars fifty-six cents and the amended grant terms as presented in the grant agreement amendment notice for an adjusted total grant limitation of eleven thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
There you go, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Message it all on signature.
Yep.
And there's two, the second page's initials, just saying that I'll.
Wanna get there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so you all know, once I get that signed, I don't anticipate, I'll put it out until the weather warms up. Just think the the cold is gonna heat the heck out of those batteries, so.
Yep.
Yeah, once, once the season turns uh next year, see you.
That's chief. All right, whole business, can a company short drive property donation? What do we know, what do we know?
Well, um, I touched base with Cordell, make sure that we be doing it right. Um, and there's some more, there's some definite hoops we have to jump through.
Yep.
I guess I just wanted to know if you want me to start this process? Cuz he was willing to, Mister, um, I can't remember Mike, I can remember his last name. It's like, well, okay, we'll get that deed going, I'm like, well, hold on. Stuff I gotta do on my side. Um, and they're still looking to give you the other piece.
He was willing to give us this one without the other one, though, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they're still hoping that you'll.
Tell them to reach out to the conservation group that owns a piece next to it.
Well, yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what we talked about last time.
It's right between.
Or to give it to the conservation commission that we could accept it for conservation purposes and put it in a, or some.
Um, so basically, if you want me to start this process, I'll get going with the public hearings. I think we'll read the planning board, yes, John, and the conservation has, oh, we get the planning board and conservation recommendations that we have to hold a public hearing. We have to make sure there's no liens and Cordell offered to help with all of that.
Who checks it for hazardous waste?
That's what we have to hire somebody to do, some of those.
That was, yeah, part of the hesitation originally was the costs of that. But I don't know that, I mean, we really don't know what that costs either.
Is that similar to like. You and you using U and H cooperative extensions and sending stuff in, like they do that for your yard?
It could be.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
How long has it been since we accepted a piece of property since we've done this?
Check your soil.
Honestly, a quick check too, before we even do that, is to check the NEHDES.
Yeah.
The NEHDES one stop to see if it's.
Listed on anyone.
Listed as a, as that.
Last piece I can think we took was up, um, off of, there was ten acres up off of. East, uh, off Conway Road. You're going up the hill on the left.
Oh, that conservation piece right there, yeah, that'll ease it right after that.
I could think that we had donated to us. And I could look back and find out how they figured all that out, I don't remember.
Oh, right at the top of there? Yeah. Between the blue house and the trees.
It's got like a little tiny sign.
Yeah. Yep, okay. Yeah, if you could, I'm sure we have file on it, look and see who we, I'm sure we did the same thing. But, I mean, we've already said, decided that it is something we want, so we might as well start the process.
And list Cordell for guidance and things like that.
Thank you. Avatar Associates assessing agreement.
So when you said put it out to bid, you know, it's it's not that easy. Cuz part of the problem with putting it out to bid according to purchasing policy is that I have to have three bids, they have to be sealed. So what I did was I made up, kind of leaning it off of the contract we are potentially have, is what we would like to see as an assessor. This would be something that I'd like, I would send out. But I wanted you to consider, there is an option for a one-year plan on this contract versus committing to the five. I would like you to consider signing up for the one more year, a couple of reasons. First of all, this was a rebal year and I got my first abatement and in twenty-twenty, we got sixty abatements. And I have a funny feeling we're gonna meet that if not exceeded again this year. And I would like to see Avatar be the one who's doing the abatements for the the numbers that they set versus trying to get someone to come in and try and figure out, not figure out that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Answer for what someone else did.
Yeah.
And this, that would give us the opportunity to actually meet some of the assessors. There's, it's not just that they can come and assess our town, we gotta like them. You know, I mean, cuz we work close with them and we want them to, you know, so I think trying to get this all done by the end of the year is just too fast right now to expect to get three companies to give us these.
Detail.
Uh, right, and to meet with them actually, cuz I know when we hired Avatar, we sat down with a couple of different companies and and met these people and talked with them and felt them out and, you know, how they operate and. And, you know, we work close with Chad and and if I have to work with someone different, I wanna make sure that it's someone that we want. I mean, honestly, you know.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a little bit more time. Yeah. To.
Do it right.
It is an increase, but it'll only be committed to it for a year and it'll give us some time to actually look around and see what else is up there. Cuz I I looked, there's a couple of assessing companies that I would like to send the 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 bid out to. But not rushed. And and this will give Avatar the opportunity to bid too fairly because right now they kinda showed us what they got where maybe if we give them a bid and it comes in sealed, it might be different.
Yep, I like it, it's a great plan.
Yeah. Agree.
Somebody wanna make a motion to sign the one-year deal with Avatar?
I would make a motion.
Go ahead.
Jake can.
How about this, it was made by Joy and seconded by Dave.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good lord. Help process opens, helping down twenty-twenty-six. So what we have, please compare us. Here? Page forty-seven thousand three hundred.
So I helped with the spreadsheet because Joe was tied up obviously with pantry and stuff, so I put on my Joe hat and tried to, you know, put the numbers together as as he would. So just did the math like crazy on the different options, on five, did four or five different options. So option one is we stay with the current plan and move up to eight point five percent. Option two, stay with the current plan and move up to. Option two, stay with the current plan and move up to ten percent. Option three, um, move up to that higher deductible plan, um, at eight point five percent. Option four, the higher deductible plan, ten percent. The short version, after all this math, is that the best balance, or a good balance, seems to be achieved by staying with the current three K deductible plan and going up to ten percent because it gives a cost savings to the town without a significant impact to employees. For example, if we go up from the, the second table is the, the increase, the difference between the employee's twenty twenty-five contribution, as it is now at the current twenty twenty-five rates. With, you add in the premium increases, then you add in the increase of the percentage that they would contribute from seven and a half to ten percent. So, um, an individual employee, their, the bi-weekly impact would be eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Again, that's not just the, that's both the premium increases that are coming with health insurance this year and, um, increasing their contribution. So, that didn't seem too bad, given how insurance rates out in the world are tripling. And then families that would go up less than a hundred dollars a month, which again is significant, but significantly less than premium increases on all, throughout across the country.
And with the ABC, we went over this to the ABC last week, and that's where we landed, I think. Pretty much, um, unanimously that without crippling someone who becomes ill and with the newer deductible and the highest out of pocket was fourteen thousand three hundred dollars, that our best option as far as keeping what we have and lessening the burden on the taxpayer would be just to go with the ten percent increase, or to, increase to ten percent of the contributions and sticking with the, with the current plan.
The savings to the town isn't huge.
Ninety-seven, seventy-seven.
Yep, it's not huge, but it's, it's still, it's still a savings. Of course, as you go up, um, the numbers, even if you, we stayed with the current plan and went to a fourteen percent, that, you know, national standard we keep talking about, the town would save twenty-two thousand dollars, but we'll just not do that to the employees this year. The math is in here, so if the employee contribution went up to fourteen percent, their combined annual, their combined monthly impact for a single plan is eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents. So again, it's not, not huge in the grand scheme of things, but we're okay with kind of taking it easy.
That's the, that's the increase, right? The eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents is the, would be the increase to the employee?
Mm-hmm, for single, so.
For single, right, you were just saying?
Yeah.
And what would that, do we know what the number is, is it on here? Of what it would actually cost them, cause I don't know what they're, what they're paying now. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the employee, ooh, double C, um, contribution increased fourteen percent. Just their contribution increase, increases their annual premium. Eight, eight hundred sixty-one dollars, not their premium, their contribution increases, increasing it, makes it a total of eight hundred sixty-one dollars twenty-one cents. And then you add in the, um, the premium increase.
How much it was going up anyway.
So if it went to the current plan, fourteen percent, the total combined monthly impact is eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents for an individual plan versus forty dollars.
Right.
If we just stick with ten percent. So it is a significant, more, bigger impact, forty dollars, you know, eighty dollars versus forty, but the savings would be twenty-two thousand dollars to the town versus nine thousand seven hundred seventy-seven.
I just struggled with doubling there.
Right, yep. That's a lot. So that sweet, sweet spot seemed to be.
That ten percent.
Okay with staying with the current plan at ten percent?
Me too.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to maintain this current plan and increase employee contribution to ten percent?
I'll make that motion.
Jake's got it, do it out.
Moved by Jake, touched by Joy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks on reference to maybe negating the other vote that you had to do eight point five.
We decided there was never a vote. I thought it was a vote, then it wasn't a vote.
Alright, fine, yep, just checking.
That was unanimous, sorry, any votes, alright.
We'll motion to a, sorry.
Jake motion, Joy second.
We put a flop from last night.
Everybody said yes. All those, sort of like landing pilot agreement.
Uh, yeah, I don't, we said we'd do something tonight, but I don't know what we were gonna do.
You said we're gonna talk, you're gonna talk about the, consider the change of price.
They were saying a cut in half to five percent, correct?
And, um, support for their.
For their block grant.
Yes, to change that apartment over a little, a couple more.
Right, yeah, one, one to two, to two.
Well, I think we decided, wasn't it, that five is better than nothing? Cause that's what they don't have, correct? So. If I remember correctly.
Yeah, there was the caveat that they don't technically have to do anything.
They will chair five oh one C three and they can prove that they are charitable and all that. They can file for a total exemption.
Total, yeah.
Five percent means better than nothing, but I wonder if they have the ability to prove that and can you negotiate with them to meet it at seven and a half?
Yep, look at that, can come back.
And I mean, I don't, I don't even know if he needs to come back, maybe we just definitely call him and say we talked about it and we're wondering if we'd be able to, we'd be in the middle of seven and a half.
Yeah, see what his response is.
Yeah, as of last year, um, sixty percent of the taxes were covered by the pilot agreement, sixty-six. So if we go from ten percent down to five, I anticipate thirty percent, or thirty-three point five percent. Or thirty-two, whatever it is, uh, would be now covered.
Right.
Cover the percentage of taxes, so I think that is a steep.
It certainly is.
Difference.
But we're on the risk of losing it all.
Yep, yeah, that's why.
Doesn't hurt to ask though.
Ask him very politely if seven and a half would be okay with them and see what they have to say and then we can make a decision at our next meeting.
I think we already voted to support the.
We did.
The block grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We agreed to support the block grant. Right. List, list. Select list.
I have, um, I'm gonna pass those down. Three, two, do I not wait? I know I have one for myself, cause Linda helped me. So, we don't have another conservation meeting until December fourth, so I don't have anything on conservation per se. Um, but I did talk to DES about the fish in Silver Lake, um, or we emailed back and forth, actually. And this is, um, their recommendation for how much consumption of fish statewide is here. And then he also sent me, um, Silver Lake in particular. And it seems that our mercury from two thousand to two thousand nineteen has, I wanna say, over-doubled. And however, that's going from trout to pickerel, not sure. What the difference, I know the bigger the fish and I, I don't know what the keeper size is for that. Um, so, um, just wanted to point that out, that they did get, and he was very happy to talk all and why. He's like, call me back if you, or email me back if you have any more questions. But there is, there's high-risk group, which is obviously gonna be somebody who's pregnant of how much, um, fish they should be consuming out of the state of New Hampshire, rivers and, rivers and lakes. Um, and then what the contaminants are. And mercury seems to be the prevalent one. What I didn't print off, what was available, was some sources of where this comes from, which is airborne and it seems to be a lot from dumps that were burning, which have now closed. So I'm hoping, like, ten more years, it goes back down. But, when they had a list of like what was open and then, or what the, the, you know, contaminating sites were and it was like closed, 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 there's like one or two open. So, that was really interesting, but I just thought I'd follow up and he got right back to me. I found, I found the right person, at least. And, um, he said any other inquiries we have is happy to take. And that's, he is the one that takes the specie, the samples too, like if you, we wanted to bring him one. Thursday, December fourth, at eleven AM, we are meeting at the Silver Lake post office and walking the trail south and then going somewhere off of forty-one, don't phobize, but we're getting in our cars and driving to it and hiking, more about that rec path thing that we're doing. Um, the last one was really well-attended, like I said, so hopefully this one will be equally as well-attended. Although, there was some chatter about it wasn't as organized as some of the attendees would have liked. Like, but it was hard to talk, it was a big group, you know, and I guess some people, you know, missed work for it and stuff and, you know, things like that. So, um, what else was there? The, um, I guess, uh, with the filled room we had here last week, I would like to bring up the idea of continuing to bring outreach on certain things that are coming across our table. Um, because I feel like we get, although the truck, as far as the truck is concerned, I'm still getting people and I'm asking them, my response to everybody with comments, concerns, to please email me cause I wanna be able to print it off and ring it here. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna participate in something where it's like, people are saying that or people have said, and so far, nobody's willing to send an email because they feel, they feel intimidated. And that's sad to me. And they've said they felt intimidated by, um, by voicing their opinion. Um, and so I said, please, you know, or do I, or do I have to sign it? Yes, you have to sign it, you know? It will become part of public record. And, um, that's pretty uncomfortable for me as a selectman, for to, to, that people are uncomfortable saying something about how the town works or doesn't work for them and. Um, but one of the, um, one of the outreach things I'd like to talk about, to bring more heads to it, is the dam. In my purview, we can't forget, there's just no way with all of this that we're presented with. I think we need more heads, um, in the game on that. I feel like every discussion I've participated in has really been existing in a vacuum. Like, this many people are lesser in the room and giving their opinion when I feel like there might be more resources out there for us. I did definitively find out that it is our dam and we do have to fix it. Um, if it, if it is broken, the state doesn't help, it's not, none of their business. I talked to somebody at the state about that last year when it came up. So that's one of the things I would like to put out to, you know, the greater, greater Madison area. Um, got no reply for the soccer nets. I mean, I got a lot of inquiries, but not, everybody wanted to take the nets off. And I was like, Adam's not happy with that. But, so, so, um, I guess covering is gonna be the way to go. Same thing with the picnic tables, I didn't put it out yet because if we weren't gonna be able, storage is gonna be an issue. So why take in a new picnic table or new-to-us picnic table if we can't store it anywhere? The, um, but the dam I would like to put out there, um, as far as, um, you know, ideas and tell people that we're starting, beginning to look at that, at this as a project coming up in the future. If anybody has information, expertise, they used to build dams, whatever, you know? That's what, that's where I am with that.
One place to start with that is they're still, they're doing the Silver Lake watershed management study?
Yeah.
So, I'm guessing that the dam would be some conversation around it, the effects of its failure, that it would have, you know, would be the impact on the.
You'd be able to drive, from what I understand, off of forty-one, you'd be able to drive out to that first island. Cause it would be so low, that's what.
Yeah.
No boats could get through, which would be detrimental to our recreation and our fishermen and stuff like that.
So a place to start is land to find out what they found out. But then the second piece of it, like you said, is getting engineering resources within our community involved.
Right. And, and whatever we, hoops we have to drive, jump through environmentally, but, um, but that's how I feel about it. And I was hoping to get support to regularly bring up the topic and say, is it okay that I reach out to the community and say, you know, who, who has the ability to help and save, possibly save us some life? And that's what I got.
I think it's a good idea.
Alright. Though I'm not skipping you to be mean, I'm skipping you because there's something on my list that's probably also on your list, so I wanna get through the rest of it before we get to that.
Okay.
Jim?
Uh, I just got an email from Tia on the master plan and then the North Country Council has started on it already. After our last meeting, we approved it, so, other than that, that's it.
Okay. I have, so, discussing the ABC about Alpha, which was the company that looks at our buildings and the schools. So I am reaching out to Heather Sherwood, she's the point person on that. So I'm hoping to get in touch with her over the next week or so and try to figure out, try to get a cost analysis for us as the town, for our building, for that'll look like. Um, and to piggyback off what you were saying after last week's meeting, I stewed for a while because of that, right? Like the, um, I want people to come forward. Right, I'd like, if there's concerns and, and it doesn't do justice to have what folks said, right? It doesn't, it doesn't.
On both, on both sides.
Right, exactly, and, and that was the thing, so in, in light of transparency discussion we had last Wednesday.
Yeah.
I really would like people to feel, like, first of all, like, we are here, whether they wanna believe it or not, to help the town. That's our, that's our goal, right? So, I would love to have people email, reach, like, email's great because then we have it in paper. We have it, we have it in writing. Reach out and then, yes, I'm gonna, if someone reached out to me, I'm gonna request that you email it to, whether it's to me or to Linda, so she can BCC us all together. Because push come to shove, our plan here is to make the town more functional and more livable for, for all of us. We're not looking to waste money, we're not looking to hide anything. And if there's concerns, like, we, we wanna know and we wanna be approachable. I, I mean, I, I don't, it makes me sad to think that people feel intimidated to come to the board and, and voice their opinion or voice the concern because we're not gonna be able to rectify that concern without it, without an actual concern that we can address. And the only way, I feel like the climate, and I think for a few years, the climate in town has been volatile. And it pains me, I've lived here my entire life and I don't plan on leaving. And that's another reason that I ran for this position is we have to have longevity in our town. And the only way is to have town involvement when there's a concern. And really, I mean, you say no concern is too small and that's true, right? Like, if you have a concern that's affecting you, you know, whether you think it's some day-to-day operations or some sort of fiscal concern, we need to know about it so we can address it. And I don't, I don't, it, it, I don't like the fact that people don't wanna bring their concerns to us because they're intimidated by the board. That's not what we're here for, we're not here to intimidate and to push our agenda. Our agenda should be, and I feel like is for the most part, if not, what we all deem as was in best interest of the town. So, that was my plea to the town is that please bring your concerns, your questions, your inquiries to us in writing so that we can address them appropriately and to the best of our ability. And to make it more functionable and more streamlined and pain-free as can be to, to do the day-to-day operations and to continue to see the town grow the way we want it to grow and to function the way it needs to function.
Agreed.
Absolutely. And that's all I've got.
Thanks Jake. I have two things on my list. One, Linda, do you remember when the last time we met with the school board, that's the joint meeting?
Oh, yeah, it's been a while. I wanna say it was last fall.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while. I wanna say it was last fall.
Yeah, cause I wanna say it was John and I.
Can you?
We had, actually, we had one there and then one here, John and I were here.
There was a spring and a fall line.
Yeah.
So I don't remember where the last one was, I think the last one was at the schools in the spring, um, can you reach out and see if we can schedule one on our turf this time? Um, I did meet with Principal Water three, four days ago. Um, and they are willing to offer up the supply closet, which is a lot bigger than it sounds for uh, Heather O'Donnell as a rec storage slash more, larger office space. Which would, because all of our, almost all of our activities happen out of that building, so it's easier for them to do it there as opposed to the front where we had originally talked about because of the key card and entrance to the building and all of those things. And looking at the position, not the person, if for some reason Heather wasn't the rec director going forward and it was somebody that didn't work at the school using that door isn't a security concern because there's a locking set of doors from the gym to the rest of the school. So they are going to start cleaning it out and allow her access to it.
Is that the one right across from the bathrooms, the water, okay.
It is, right now it's tight because they have shelves down each wall.
But it's a pretty decent sized room.
It's a decent sized room for storing our basketballs, our softballs and all those things that we use in the gym or whatever. And allow Heather a space to sit and potentially have an office if she needs it. And I know she has this up here, but I just think it's significantly smaller than what they're offering her and maybe we could take this back for storage, if that was the case. Um, but they've essentially just said, you can have it. Um, Heather thinks that the school board may be looking for an MOU, which is why I wanna meet with them. Um, for whatever they may wanna put on it, we'll go over it together and see what they have to say. But we try to meet with them twice a year anyway and I, like I said, I don't think we've met with them since before town meeting.
We haven't.
Well, we know we haven't, we want to call with everybody, so it's me, Joy and John met with them, I think, just before town meeting, so it is time to do it again. Either way. Um, the other thing on my list is PFAS, Joy, I asked you two weeks ago to get Linda some numbers, did you get her numbers?
I think that's what, I understand what this is. Um, Linda was looking for what can be, what qualifies under the grant and how do we receive our monies? So I sent Linda a detailed email just today, so I'm cutting it right to the last minute. Um, but what, what cost per the grant wording and per my meeting, the project kickoff meeting with um, DES in the spring. So it describes what type of costs are eligible under the plan. Uh, for example, wages and hours um, spent in project administration, oversight, management and administrative tasks related to the installation of the point-of-entry um, treatment systems, the POET. And they said it does include the cost of the interim bottled water. Um, pre-construction costs such as the cost of the water testing for that FX Lions did for um, the minerals to make sure that whatever water filtration systems happen, it filters out the minerals before it gets to the filters that must filter out the PFAS.
So my, my problem here is the timeline. We're getting, we're, we're at the end of November here and this was something was asked to be done a long time ago to figure out these budget numbers and where it was coming from. I'm at the point where I would like to see this back under the purview of somebody who's in this building every day so that it can get handled in a timely fashion.
Sure.
And I'd hate to throw it on somebody else's plate in the middle of all of it, but I, we're at a point where it just needs to get done and I don't feel like it is. Whether it be the systems or dealing with the budget numbers or whatever the case may be, I think, Linda, do you have a total on bottled water? As far as what we've spent this year, is that on here?
Seven thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
That's right. Okay. So just, I mean, that's the cost of a s- more than one system. Basically, I'd like to see it under the purview of somebody in this building who's here every day who can move this along a little bit quicker and deal with the problem at hand.
Okay.
Um, and like I said, I, I hate, I think Mike was doing a fine job before and I'd like to give it back to him if the board agrees. Um, so I will make a motion to take the PFAS oversight and its grants and all its functions and move them back under the purview of Michael Brooks.
Would it be that or would it be his title as?
His title as Emergency Management Director. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain because.
I don't know enough about it to put on stuff like this, so I'll abstain.
Yeah, I'm not quite.
I don't know who was doing what.
Not quite sure what it would look like going back there, since it did come off, so I don't know.
I think then it would be, it would be a no, not an abstention.
Well, I feel like I don't have enough information as to.
I just don't have the experience, I don't know what was happening before this to now and.
Alright, so this.
How it got this into this place.
Three zero two, yes. Alright, Joy, is there anything else on your list?
Sure. Um, do we have that copy of the purchasing policy, Linda, that could be distributed to the board?
Of course.
Yep. Thank you.
Not to step on, I, I think we didn't need to be.
We're into a little debate.
Next, next meeting, that's why we didn't have it today.
Yeah.
The purchasing policies. When we went over it on Wednesday.
Oh, because it was gonna take up too much time or something.
Yeah, no, just to get the copy.
Yeah, 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 so I think we plan on talking about that next, whatever, whatever date it is.
Alright, and then I'm following up on the personal use of municipal equipment. Um, Lindy, we're gonna follow up with Cordell, um, what kind of legality of it and then Primex and the liability aspects of it, have you gotten?
I did follow up with Cordell, but I didn't realize Primex, so I'll still have to reach out to Primex and I can have that all for you together for the next meeting.
Okay, and then um, since the policy calls for um, written authorization from a department head and then notification of the select board, whether it's all, the entire board for the previous policy or the new policy that you mentioned that we haven't seen yet, um, whether it's one select board, could we have copies of all of those?
Of all of?
The written authorization uh, for personal use of municipal equipment and then the notifications of the select board?
For?
The previous, previous use?
Yeah, previous use, yeah.
And then the next thing was, um, we had a CIP meeting, um, Dave Swift was there, we went through the DPW fleet in length and detail. Um, he was probably there with us for two hours.
Longer.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, he was probably there for even that much, yep, so went through that, we have all the DPW updated information. Um, code enforcement, we just need some information on Bob, from Bob about just um, the vehicle and kind of what he sees replacement of that vehicle um, to look like unless the select board wants to kinda take that on. Or do we want Bob to look into what it would look like to purchase a new vehicle in five, ten, whatever, three years?
Typically, he gets.
I was gonna say, doesn't he get a hand-me-down, so that's, I was gonna say.
The old police car, is that what he got the last time?
Well, he got the Tahoe from the DPW.
He got that DPW.
Oh, DPW.
And he had a Escape, right, the green Escape that you put the dog in?
He had the uh, four, yeah, there was, that was the old uh, DPW or, I don't know where they got the Escape from, but.
Yeah, where did that car go?
I don't think he's ever had a.
It's a beautiful color.
Remember, it's like green?
Yeah, it was green. Greenish.
I don't think he's ever had a new one.
No.
No, it's just a leftover.
He's like the youngest child, he just gets what's best.
So how do we wanna handle that in the CIP? Cause it's twenty seventeen?
Or a Charger?
There you go, he can get to them real fast.
It's twenty seventeen.
I guess the reality is, is the next hand-me-down essentially would be the DPW pickup and does that make sense?
Sense, right, so do we just plan for a purchase and if it doesn't, if we're able to do a hand-me-down, then?
I mean, we can put it in as, you know, year to replace, we anticipate replacing it maybe the year that we plan on replacing the Charger, like you said, or just the plan to replace one of the other DPW trucks. And then we say, you know, purchase price would basically be free. The expected, you know, offset is getting another town truck. So that's how we'll deal with it?
Yeah, maybe, sure.
Okay.
I mean, unless there's something going on with that vehicle, I don't, I see it lasting another hundred thousand miles, it only drives from, you know, here to, you know, side to side.
It'll probably rust out before it goes to pot, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's like barely.
Yeah, he doesn't put a lot of money.
It looks brand new, you know?
Alright, and then the next piece was, um, I have the updates from the library and um, I think the DPW is pretty much done. Dave might have maybe a couple of things to get us, but that's pretty much done. Um, so in general, government repairs. You know, we just wanna check to see, see if you want, committee want to see who, under whose purview it falls to kinda make these decisions and provide this information. Um, one is Silver Lake Dam repairs, we've had that on the CIP for two million dollars, year to be determined. Um, so you know, who kind of owns that information, like what's the priority and is that, that's the select board, I would think.
It is us and I think, I mean, the two million dollars is skewed because we've gotten estimates from seven hundred thousand to two million depending on when we were talking about it and what we were talking about and which is why on this next warrant, we're looking at raising and appropriating the, the rest of the money to get the study done to figure out what it's gonna cost to replace.
Okay, so then, so that would be us. Um, Town Hall Front Porch, you know, who's responsible for kind of prioritizing it? What year do it, doesn't need to be done, how much, you know, getting quotes, how much it's gonna cost? Can we get a grant to offset it, cause it's a historical building? Is that us?
I mean, it's us, but it, it's been dealing with a lot of those types of projects of the hyeep design, things like that and the flooring.
I did reach out for a quote on the two porches, but I haven't gotten it back yet.
Alright, so in terms of kind of the information gathering, we're asking Linda to do kind of the information piece and then decision-making and putting it on the CIP and stuff is us?
Yep.
Okay, so then that porch you said, the heating system, I believe we did under RMC. Um, the sign is done, um, Town Hall vinyl, vinyl siding is kind of a, a future project.
All the upper green stuff?
Yeah, so it's all on.
Right, cause it was repaired, but three years ago.
Somebody did put some back on.
Yeah, the front, right.
Yeah, we had it painted when we had that micro burst or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that was crazy.
Fix that.
I don't know the field at that point.
Yeah, and it's, I don't know, it looks terrible.
So kind of, you know, what year are we thinking, is that like?
Replacing, is it paintable?
I mean, technically.
To get one more cycle out of it?
I mean, you could, you could paint it, you'd have to get a.
Sprayer?
The, well, I mean, yeah, you would probably, or you could paint it on, but you'd have to get the appropriate paint. It could be done, but like anything, painting plastic, like I said, it would get you probably four or five years. And then you would probably, I mean, you could paint it again, but I mean, it's not gonna.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, painting plastics never.
No, I know.
Glorious idea, but if, but if it could limp us along for.
Yeah, cause it's, it's quite expensive to.
Right, that, I know that that cedar impression style siding is substantially more expensive than typical D4, so.
I was in there today and I was picked up, I said, I don't want it to be like the Town Hall, literally said that.
Alright, so in terms of looking at that project, are we, what, kind of what year are we putting on sinking money into it, how much money? Do we wanna do some data gathering first or?
Do we, um, with some of these, and again, I guess this is kind of an unknown because we don't know yet, but um, with that, if we go the route of Alpha, they will provide us a fuller file of everything that's on the buildings and the buildings that needs to be replaced, so I mean, we can put something in tentatively, but they may say, oh, that should be done sooner than later, but so, I don't know, just food for thought, I suppose.
Okay.
Is it open to the elements?
What's that?
The vinyl siding?
The vinyl siding, is it down, so the wood's posed?
No, 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 at one point it was, it was repaired.
Okay.
The color is like gone.
It's fading, yeah.
Yeah.
It does sit in the sun all day long.
Alright, so we're still information gathering on whether or not we set that.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that I can have uh, maybe a cost analysis from Heather by our next meeting, that's my hope.
Okay.
And then kinda, cause they're still, I think, in the fact gathering process for the schools, so.
And then we had um, pavilion construction on here. Just cause it's gonna be a project, it's gonna need funding in the next, however many years to set it up.
Think we could, uh, block, trying to get that block on it or do it with the lots?
For Old Homewake?
I was from, I was from Old Homewake.
On the pavilion, not Peter, right, Old Homewake?
It's a.
It's an Old Homewake project, we have an Old Homewake fund and uh, we'll, we'll look into grants at some point, but I don't know that that belongs on the town CIP.
It's a town building. That you're gonna ask.
If the town doesn't pay for it, we're gonna have to, we're gonna end up having to keep it off, right, probably, like maintain it.
Yeah, but I, and correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't something we were thinking about asking the select board to put on a budget. I mean, not that we couldn't, but.
Not this year, but.
I don't think we've gotten that far.
Yeah, we're not that far along and I think we're, we're putting the cart before the horse.
My thought, looking at the whole thing was, I'd like to wrap all that ball, anything associated with the ball field and see if we couldn't get a block grant for it.
Right.
But seeing the numbers that were provided by the electrical company for what it's gonna cost to light the ball fields, that kind of, cause the most you can, or unless they change the parameters, the last time I looked at the most we could qualify for was half a million dollars.
And because, because I forgot, that was part of my list, with the, the lighting was roughly a hundred sixty thousand dollars per field and I have it right in front of me, I think it was one sixty-six and change, yeah, one sixty-six and change per field.
Oh, good, oh, good lord, sorry, I gotta cram.
You ran out of water, I don't know.
Alright, good go.
Alright, so um, so whoever's purview that falls under, whether because it is town-maintained fields and it would be a town-maintained building on town-maintained fields, well, that's BOS, or Old Homewake wants to take the lean on it, um, whoever owns it, we just, when they're ready, think about what year you're gonna do it and um, do the cost analysis for them and.
Two thousand and five would have been the ideal. We're traveling back in time. There is no year in sight because there's, there's no money in sight.
Well, the purpose of a CIP is to save the money before you hit the year that you want it.
I know, but even that's a big number, yeah.
Alright, and so then that does come to the ball field and adding that to the CIP, cause obviously again, a significant expense to government property. So that just, I'll put it on the CIP, but then the information will come from this board.
Yeah.
And then, there was another one. It's slipped in my mind at the moment, there was another one getting added, I can't remember what it was. Alright, those are the basic ones and then we'll see the um, as the master plan receives their feedback, um, the commit, the, the committee that's redoing the master plan, you know, they received their feedback, presumably they'll be filling out some forms as to what they would propose for kind of government projects and any of that would come before the committee and then the board anyway. Can't think of what the other thing was, so. Let's go on. I do know folks, one thing that um, that I've talked about and other folks have is um, looking at upstairs, making that accessible, making that another meeting space that's larger so we don't have people in the hallway kind of thing, so. Again, pipe dream tied into master plan and all that, but it's just something on people's radar.
I think the upstairs is more viable and we can get a lot done with volunteering, I would volunteer, I have experienced students something like that.
It's, it's the elevator, that's the game.
I know, I'm finding, I know, I was here for the elevator, but if there was a grant for an elevator, I would wholeheartedly support that. Cause then we can give the PD down here the whole upstairs, they could have a dance party down here.
I don't know, these are their hand-in-game combat training, right here.
Yes.
I don't know that I've ever seen a sergeant Martin dance, at least not in the last ten years or so.
Or do we want to, are we doing something with this?
Oh, I, I guess, just kind of for reference, but um.
Oh, alright, I didn't know, it was like, you can't, I'm out.
I know, we've talked, yes, we've talked about it, so I did put together, still yours, cause mine is buried somewhere. A physical organization chart for the town of Madison. Um, it's just gonna help us in our review process, help everyone answer the, for some reason, ever-elusive question that we have a concrete answer to, we can just remember how many people work in the DPW. Um, so it just shows, this one shows um, So it just shows, this one shows, um, titles, and how many people are kind of in that, in that position. Top of the chart, as Madison voters, people, cause you put us here, we, you are our boss, for those of us who are elected, and pretty much everybody in town, for the most part, even the library trustees, report to the Madison voters, and they kind of manage the library. So nearly every hired person in town ultimately reports to a board, or something that has been, or an individual that's been elected by the people, so you guys are at the top of the list. And then I did do another one, um, just with people's names, tried to, again, map out who's where and stuff, and. But this started because I think we just want to make sure that we understand the whole big picture, as we're looking at, um, reviews and staffing and stuff like that, so. There you go. That's all I have for now.
Linda?
Kate, you're here. You're just here for fun.
Jakey?
She can't get enough of it.
I shouldn't specify, Jake Brooks.
Oh, tax bills hit the mail yesterday, and the money is rolling in already, and by rolling, it's a real slow trickle, but.
It's moving.
Better than nothing. So this just gives you a snapshot of where we are at the end of today. Um, not, the, um, the top is the most recent bill, of course, it's got like six million dollars in receivable, and we've collected like, uh, about one point six percent of that. It is what it is, like I say, they just hit the mail, but they hit the, uh, the kiosk last week, so there's been a majority of what's been collected has been online. So I anticipate that's gonna start coming in, generally speaking, people have been calling for three, four weeks now, where's my tax bill? Because we were, not that anybody here did anything wrong, the DRA, all kinds of delays, we were, we were about a month late getting the tax rate set and the bills out compared to last year. But, so anyway, that process has started, and the due date is December thirty-first, I don't love it, but I have, you have to give thirty days.
Yep.
And it's better than January for, for me. Second thing, uh, I got an email notification today that our second appeal on the MODOC Hill culvert replacement was denied by FEMA. And I, I just got the email from FEMA today, so all the outline in the process is two appeals, so I'm not sure if there's a higher authority that we could go to than FEMA, I was gonna reach out to Senator Hassan's office tomorrow, although I reached out to her before and didn't really help, maybe try again and see if she has any recommendations of another avenue. It's the, the exposure, what we were looking for reimbursement was eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars, so it's not chump change. But that's where we're at, and the reasoning, just not to rehab everything, is they really are stuck on the fact that it was damaged so many times that we didn't do anything to fix it. That's basically the reasoning for denying, even though, you know.
It's false.
All, all of the work that was, work, it was a lot of research with different options that the DPW was looking at, be it the pre-cas structure, or different things that were huge money, and then trying to find an avenue that worked financially. It just took time, and they, that didn't really factor into their decision, all they, they just, we didn't do anything. Didn't matter that we didn't have any money to do anything with, but, in any event, it's denied, so I'm, I'm looking into, if we have a next step, I'll, I'll be back here in two weeks to let you know what that is, if there is one. But if there isn't one, it's just, we did all the work, submitted all the paperwork, and they just denied it.
Joe Dame holds a title of some kind of regional FEMA director or something, and he obviously works really close with, um, Senator Hassan's office, so if you're looking to go, you know, touch base again, Joe's probably the resource. She was just here for the pantry Thanksgiving grocery distribution with Joe, so.
And then the last thing I have, it's not a terrible bit of good news, but it's not huge bad news either. I just got an email also from the Secretary of State's office today, they have awarded a contract on the new accessible voting system that they undertook with a vendor, and I had budgeted for six hundred dollars a year on the programming, turns out it's gonna be six hundred and fifty, so I need to add a hundred and fifty dollars to that line of the election budget. I got it only budgeted six hundred, and it's six fifty, so, can't have it.
Hope it's not on that line.
But they did change the law in New Hampshire that says we must use that, make that system available to the people, so. It's really, I don't know why that's not an unfunded mandate, cause if we have to make it accessible, then just program it for us.
Right.
But, in any event, we, we need to do it, it's six hundred and fifty bucks for us, and they'll, they will pay, the Secretary of State pays for the state and, uh, federal elections, so really all we have to do is for March.
For March, yeah.
And the school also has to pay six hundred and fifty dollars for their ballot. So I'll, I'll make sure that the school board is aware of that, I mean, they're aware, they paid six hundred last year. It's gonna be six fifty this year. And we don't have a choice, they don't have a choice. That's all I have, all good news.
Thanks, Mike, Chief Baker?
Yeah, we've been maintaining a fairly busy call volume. I'll touch base on one thing, that we, we've, we've had this case with an individual in town, there's a sex assault case, and I'll brag that, uh, it's my first big one, but this individual just pled guilty to, uh, felony second degree assault, and he is a huge sex offender in town, Steve Thomas. He reports to the Carroll County House of Corrections in six days for his one-year incarceration, so, um, I'm quite proud of that, the activity that the department handled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you, Tessa graduated from the DARE instructor, um, training, um, it's a two-week training, I would argue is probably one of the hardest law enforcement, uh, trainings, uh, I've been to it. So she'll be, uh, doing that for fifth and sixth grade starting in the spring.
The schools are allowing it back in?
Uh, yes, yeah, they're very excited to have it back, yeah, when I started it, COVID kind of stopped it out, so. After I got a couple of years into it, but, at any rate, uh, we're, to touch base on the DUI, uh, highway seat degrants, we're doing statewide, um, we're participating in statewide mobilization on, tomorrow night, so we'll have, um, some extra cars out on the road for that, so, um, if anyone.
Is, uh. Me, yourself.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Keith, thank you guys for your work.
Comment?
Sure, now you're the only one here.
If I remember correctly, um, I think this board either voted or agreed upon formulating a letter to the employees about the PFAS situation. Could you update me on that, please?
It is, it's in the works.
It's in the works?
It is in the works.
It's been in the works for approximately for a year?
I don't know by. It was, no, it's not that long, it was, cause it's been in my tenure.
Well, I think it was before that.
I think the, the previous board had said no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Cause we voted to do.
This, this board unanimously voted yes, and the letter itself is under review before we send it out to the employees.
Timeline, can you give us an expectation about when that might happen?
I don't know, I put my foot in my mouth, but I can't imagine it's gonna be more than the next month.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, should be good, within the next month.
Also, um, how far along is this PFAS situation that you're transferring, uh, the responsibilities, I mean, is it almost done?
No.
No?
Not even, it's never gonna be done.
Well, I mean, just gonna need to be monitored, make sure.
That's it.
But, is, is, is the work done, basically?
There are no systems in place anywhere, including here, there are no point of entry systems in place, or point of view systems in place, whatever you wanna call them, anywhere, including the Town Hall, or Fire Department, wherever the system goes, okay?
Because the state of New Hampshire, um, did not want to see the design specification I wrote until we had all the secondary testing, all the mineral testing completed, and we had two additional properties come on the list. So they've been tested, and I followed up with the testing company several times, and just while we're sitting here, those results came in. So I'll hand over the design specification, if it's going to, um, Mike, then I'll hand him the design specification and all the test results, and let him put that back together and get that off to DS.
Also, um, can we expect updates from the board periodically on the progress of the situation?
Yes, I mean, Chief's been here at ninety percent of the meetings I can recall.
And finally, I'd like to thank Selectman Gray for putting herself in the hot seat and bringing this to the forefront approximately a year plus ago, so, thank you, Joy. I know you took a lot of heat, but you did the right thing, and, uh, the residents of Madison are grateful, thank you.
Just want to point out, and I do thank Joy for her service over the past year.
She's done a lot of work.
This has been, this has been in the works since before that, just so we're clear, there were other members of the Town Hall that secured the grant and things of that nature.
Well, she took the bull by the horns.
Before, she did, she's.
Let's, let's say it as it is.
Signature items.
I know, I kinda wanna, I'll at least want a picture of it.
Yeah, I wanna drive these roads, I go to East Shore Drive all the time, and I wanna see outline. Thank you.
I will not sign that. This is for my wife.
Gave us three lines on, um, process, uh, on the county. Hey, I was like, how did that just?
Twenty-five, right?
Guys, I have pictures of roads on my freaking phone, ridiculous.
This is just him, right?
Yeah, but two pages, cause you have to initial.
Yeah, and you have to initial the second one. Alright, so this is also for.
So we're giving hats to all the, um, all fifty basketball participants and coaches?
Yes, um, they're winter hats with our logo and a, on top of a leather basketball patch. All the coaches, all the basketball players, sponsored by myself and American Air.
There's only three, did you just get a sign, I guess, they only have three. They don't, we have five.
Linda, do we, do you need more than the three signatures on the?
Yes, please, sorry, yeah, if you don't mind.
I wanna make sure I'm signing in the right place here.
We have to initial on the back.
Yeah, then Jim will do it, and then the state will do it.
One's also?
No, one's also.
So we're paying it out of the RECC revolving fund, but donations were made into the RECC revolving fund, basically?
No, not were, will, will be made, yes, yes, Paradise Machine and American Air Systems will be donating into the RECC revolving fund to cover the cost of the ads.
Do we have to check here, Linda, that we're doing the?
If you don't want to share it, don't mind.
Now one's also.
Do you have a motion to return?
Um, we.
Oh, wait.
Can we just go over what our meeting time is next time, in case we're doing more reviews?
Oh, yes, I did, sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
I asked Linda to schedule a non-public at three o'clock next meeting time.
December, okay.
To finish the two that we did today.
Okay.
Um, and then hopefully right after that, we can do what we did today for others.
Okay, alright, well, so what's the timeframe?
Eight o'clock on the ninth.
Okay.
Ninth, I think.
November.
Ninth, I guess, sorry.
MBM, the calendar on the website has gone wonky.
Again?
Yeah, it still has this on Mondays.
Yeah.
I guess somebody showed up yesterday, cause the town calendar on the website said that the, it's when we moved it for the Veterans Day.
That one Monday.
That one Monday moved the whole sequence of them.
Alright, I'll try and fix it, that's just been a nightmare.
Do you want help?
Um, come, I'll tackle it, I'm gonna come.
Alright, acceptable, I'll make the motion to the judge. Motion by Jim, second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just shy of seven o'clock, good job, team.
I know, right?